Petrie has passed out something she'd like to discuss, so let's go ahead and discuss that.
If there is passage tonight as a new historic preservation ordinance, I thought it'd be helpful to have kind of a little mini brochure that explains kind of the general gist of the changes and kind of what somebody would need to do if they have a project. And this kind of goes through the steps of analysis. This ordinance is not necessarily easier for reading purposes, but it will be easier on a lot of people doing projects. And so, I didn't want to get too detailed, but I thought these things were kind of important. And then, I've given examples that we've run into over time and sort of who would be reviewing it, if it would be reviewed, and that sort of thing. This is just a sample for you all to, so that you can have in your hip pocket, okay. These are the changes, this is what you need to do, read this and then call Petrie. And then the standards, the Secretary of Interior Standards, which this is fully in compliance with, is on the back and reference to our design guidelines. And then since our last meeting, I think you probably, some of you may be aware, that we've had some projects that have come up that made me question how they would fit into our own scheme. So I sort of did some of my own beta testing, so to speak, of, okay, if you get this, who goes, you know, how does it work through our system? And there was, in my view, a gaping hole that I had failed to really appreciate. And that is, if you have someone who has a historic house that already has replacement type features like vinyl siding or vinyl windows, and they just want to come in and replace those, how do we work this? Well, our ordinance is a historic preservation ordinance. It's not a historic put it back the way it was ordinance. And so, under the scheme here, if someone had vinyl replacement that wasn't original, and they wanted to come in and do exactly the same thing, replace those with a same type of material, that would be exempt from review. Because we're not, I don't think that we have the authority really to tell people they got to take it all the way back to what was original, if that original's already gone. And so, I think that will help with a lot of folks who just want to do some maintenance and that sort of thing, and that will fall under ordinary maintenance, if that makes sense.
Well, I have a few very clear questions. One, the definition of maintenance.
Yes.
So if there's a house on Sarafin Street, and the property owner wants to replace the vinyl siding.
Right.
It's molded, it's cracked, it's faded, maintenance?
Yes, yes.
Replacement?
As long as they weren't changing details, and they were just replacing old vinyl siding with vinyl siding, it would be considered ordinary maintenance.
Yeah, I don't think that, you mentioned that, you know, the city has no business to tell someone that has a home built in the 20s, the 30s, the 40s, that they would have to ever repair their home back to that condition.
If that wasn't, if they didn't have wood today, that would be absolutely true. We do have in here that if it is wood, that if they were going to replace, it would be wood, but they would just come before the condition.
Define for me like kind.
Well, in kind is defined, in kind is defined, I don't, let me see if I have that in front of me. In kind is very specific to historic preservation ordinances and in our design guidelines. And it means very specifically. And vinyl for vinyl is not an in kind, let me just say. And I've peeled that out, so that in kind is consistent with our design guidelines and the Secretary of Interior Standards, which is materials of identical features, finishes, and construction technique or craftsmanship, and match the original materials in design and other visual qualities that can be perceived or as visible by ordinary viewing. So, in kind means original to something that is looks, feels like original. What I've done is, in the ordinary maintenance and repair section, is said, okay, you have in kind, but then you have non-original materials that are replaced with materials of the same type, two different categories.
So, it's difficult, as I told you, I think it's difficult.
I think that is a very difficult.
But what it says is.
I understand what you're saying, I get it.
If you have, whatever you have now, if you're replacing it with what you have now, it isn't a project that requires review by landlord.
That's basically it.
It's just maintenance.
So, a lot of our homes in St. Genevieve, and I don't know the timeframe, but they were sided in aluminum siding, and that was the thing, right? The 70s probably, when everybody did that.
Right.
Well, now, that's not as easy to come by as vinyl siding. So if I have a house that has faded aluminum siding, can I replace that with vinyl siding, even though it's not the exact same material?
I think that you have to have some practicality when you read this, and to me, it's still a synthetic material, replace for a synthetic material. It's not, it's not the original wood. If you were replacing, say vinyl siding with cement, now you're talking about a whole different beast. But aluminum siding, vinyl siding, in the same category of materials.
So if I have vinyl windows now, and I want to replace them with aluminum windows?
I think that, the vinyl was not original.
Doesn't matter?
I don't think so.
Okay. And the other thing I'd like very quickly just get a public comment on from, from our city staff, is what is the role of the, I guess we're going to call it the Heritage Commission? What are they supposed to do? And I want to, I don't want to ever read a paper that this commission has approved or denied requests by a homeowner, because they just didn't like it.
They should never do that.
They just felt like, you know, instead of that color brick, you really, you know, you want to use this color brick.
No.
I want them, my perception of their role is to understand this ordinance, and to only approve or deny requests based specifically on this ordinance. And those instructions will be given to that commission, and they will follow them. We, listen, it's the elephant in the room, in the past, we've had lots of issues, that's why we're talking about this tonight. I want to make sure that we don't encounter issues like we have in the past.
Well, we, it's very specific, you have to follow the Secretary of Interior Standards, which is on this brochure, and our design guidelines, which are really just more detailed about that. Every commission meeting, I give them the project, and I tell them exactly what the design guidelines say. And in the past, sometimes they just don't agree with me.
Sometimes they just went off and did what they wanted to do, and we can't have that.
Well, I don't know how, I don't know how we prevent that from happening.
Well, I think that.
You have to have guidelines.
They have guidelines.
I think if they don't follow the guidelines, we need to do whatever we can to change members on that board.
Yeah, if we have guidelines to follow, that's what we have to do.
I want to protect, I want to protect our heritage as much or more than anybody in town.
Sure.
But we just can't allow individuals that the mayor nominates and this board approves to have free will on interpreting these regulations, and just because they don't like it, doing something different. Can't have that in the future.
Well, again, we can't vote for them, tell them how to vote. We make a recommendation as to how they should vote.
What is, what is the mechanism?
But if they err, then it's appealed to you, and you get to decide.
I understand that, I understand that. But I think in the past, I don't know what's happened as far as the appeal process. But if, what is the mechanism for the board to censor or remove someone on a commission?
Well, can I just insert just some kind of background that I think exists, and I think Martin could be able to justify?
I've got a very specific question on the table.
Okay, I understand. When I'm, what I'm about to say is that, in my experience so far, and I think Martin probably would agree, is that you ordinarily see, what I have seen, when the commission deviates from the guidelines, it's loosening them in the favor of the applicant.
Listen, that's just, that's your, that's your, that's your experience, my experience differs slightly from that.
Okay.
And Petrie, I want to say thank you for all the work you've put into this. I'm a little fired up over it, I'm trying not to get too fired up, but it's just, it's so important, and I know you've worked so hard on this to get it to the table for the second time, but I simply misunderstood some things the first time that I voted on.
Well, and I think we.
And I feel, I feel like they're completely cleared, I feel like they're completely cleared up. Shame on me.
No, I don't think so.
I think the thing that we have to try to get, Petrie or whoever's in that position, and also the chairman of that commission, same way, kind of like planning and zoning, there's those same things that you.
I totally understand, yeah.
That the times you gotta go, hey, that really don't apply to you, we're not talking about that anymore. It's kind of the same, it's kind of the same thing you're talking about.
It should be a really cut and dry presentation, a cut and dry answer, and that any board commissioner of the city has to have, be able to defend their position, based on the ordinance, and only on the written ordinance. Again, thank you very much for all the work you've done.
You're welcome.
That's it.
Your other question, though, and I don't know that we necessarily did address that.
No.
Does the board have the power to remove someone that we appoint?
On any board commissioner in the city.
Yeah, yeah.
There are, I can't.
If you don't, if we don't know today, I would just like to know in the future.
Yeah.
It's a good point.
I don't think there's any language in this ordinance that addresses that specifically, although, and we'll look at it, it may be kind of implicit in the mayor's appointing authority, that he can remove them.
Gotcha.
You know, I don't know if it's in there, it's not in the historic preservation ordinance. All right, thanks.
I'll calm down, sorry.
Well, we have with us tonight representatives from P F M, you're on, you're up.
All right, yourself?
All right, thank you.
Perfect. Here you go.
Thank you.
So firstly, I want to apologize for being such. Excuse me?
He doesn't have everything. We're all prepared.
Thank you.
Yeah, operate.
That's right.
Yes, I told him how many.
So, good evening, my name's Henry Sun, I'm an analyst here at the PFM Asset Management. We're located over in the Westport Plaza, where the investment advisor, administrator of the MOSIT program.
All right, Henry, they're televising this, so if you could step over to the.
Yeah, you can be on TV there. Smart.
Yeah.
Well, again, just to introduce myself, my name's Henry Sun, I work at a PFM Asset Management, we're the investment advisor, administrator for the MOSIT program, here to talk a little bit about the program today.
My name's Maria Altmar, I'm the managing director of the St. Louis office, and I work here in Missouri, too. So, Henry, would you like to?
Sure, absolutely. So firstly, I want to say thank you for the council for allowing us to come here and giving us some time here to discuss the program. Passed around a presentation just with some information about the MOSIT program, I'll be going through page by page, so if there's any questions at any time, please feel free to interrupt me and ask, and then we can get those cleared up. So we'll start on page three here, just some basic information about the MOSIT program. MOSIT stands for the Missouri Securities Investment Program. So it's a program that was designed for and owned wholly by public entities in the state of Missouri, so that's cities, counties, school districts. It was created to, you know, allow public entities to have access to a variety of investment services. So we've been around since 1991, and since our inception, we've never lost one penny of investor principal. Currently, there are over 290 members of the MOSIT program with just over $1.2 billion of public money. Again, this is from cities, counties, and school districts. The different programs that we have invest in securities that are all permitted by state statute. And the program is sponsored by MML, the Missouri Municipal League, and Dan Ross, the executive director of the MML, actually sits on the MOSIT board. So if we go to the next page, we have a page of the different board of directors, and you'll see that Dan Ross, executive director of MML, sits on this board.
And just to add a couple of things, the board is actually made up of all the sponsors, so the school districts that sponsor it, the counties and cities. So the board is made up of three of each entities. Because MML and the counties have only become sponsors in the last year or so, they're still having people vote on the sponsors for the board, but right now, it's Dan from MML, and then also Dick Burke from the counties.
So, MOSIT program is an entity in and of itself. We work for PFM Asset Management, we're hired by the MOSIT program to be the investment advisor and the administrator and marketing agent for the program. For the custodian, the program uses US Bank, and they use Price Waterhouse Coopers for the accountants, and Brian Cave for the legal counsel. So how the program works is, it's owned 100% by the public entities, the members of the program. It's run by a board of directors, and we work for, again, PFM, and they're hired by the board of directors to work for the program. And one important thing to mention about being an investment advisor for the program is that PFM Asset Management has a fiduciary responsibility to its members as the investment advisor. So what that means is that we're on the hook for the decisions and the suggestions and the recommendations that we provide to its members. If we make a suggestion that's outside of state statute, for example, or out of constitution, then I personally would be liable for that, for, I'd be, you know.
With the firm?
Yeah.
PFM. And we have insurance that covers investment advisors, so that we have to make you whole at the end of the day. So that's why a lot of people prefer to have an investment advisor, because fiduciary responsibility is taken away from you, and it's put on us. And just to tell you how good we are at our job, not that I want to brag, is we've been doing this for 34 years, and we've never lost one cent of principal in the 34 years that we've been doing this for public entities nationwide. We manage over $50 billion in assets, and we advise on a further $50 billion. So over $100 billion in public funds, we're in 36 states, and we service public entities across all 50 states. So we have a good, long, strong track record.
So if we move on to the next page here, we're just going to go over a few of the services that we provide to its members. So, we have the MOSIT Liquid Series, there's a Term Series, and a few other services. The Liquid Series is AAAA rated by S and P, which is the highest rating for short-term investments. And the Term program that we have is AAAF, which is the highest rating for a fixed-term investment-type program. So, the MOSIT program, I'll start with the Liquid Series, is a dollar in, dollar out program, where all the balances you have in the MOSIT Liquid Series earns a rate of return that's listed on the website. And you're able to have multiple accounts, and we have lots of other services, including, you know, monthly statements, online access to your account, and a lot of services for this Liquid Series.
As a member, you don't actually pay to be a member, you don't pay for being any of the investing with the Liquid Series or the Term Series, all of that is actually covered by the program itself. So to you, the investor, everything is net of fees.
Can we go into more detail about how that works before we leave it?
Sure, no, no. So how that works actually is, is if you joined and you became a member, to become a member, it takes an ordinance, and it usually takes two readings of the ordinance. You open an account with us, you can move your funds in by wire or ACH electronically, or we also have a client service group that you can do it by phone. When you put the funds in the account, they're actually invested, it's invested the same day. So if you send in a million dollars and it's in the Liquid Series, all the funds that come in that day from the various public entities are invested immediately that day by 1 o'clock. And they're invested in permitted investments according to the Missouri Constitution, which are treasuries, agencies, CDs, some commercial paper, repurchase agreements, so we do follow the Constitution. What happens then, if you wanted to put some money, for example, into the Term Series, you would say, I want to invest some funds out, you can go out anywhere from 60 days to 18 months. You would tell us when you need that money to mature, so it might be three months, six months, nine months, and we'll provide you rates and that program. The MOSIT Liquid Series right now is paying four basis points, there's 100 basis points and 1%, so it's four basis points. And the Term Series right now, if you're going out anywhere from three to six months, is anywhere between 20 and 28 basis points, which we're finding is very good right now. We're winning an awful lot of bids from those rates. And then if you go out a little longer, you might get 40, 50, 60 basis points out, you know, if you're heading out 18 months or so. Okay?
Yeah, great, so.
I want to know what we did.
I guess, try to explain that, I guess, comparing it to if right now, we're getting a half of a percent on our CD.
Fifty basis points.
Right, so a half a percent is 50 basis points, for example, okay?
And I know that we're getting that.
Yeah, and that, if you're getting 50 basis points, that would be about nine months. Like a CD right now is paying about 50 basis points out about nine months.
Why do you go with basis points and not percentages?
Because unfortunately, the rates are so bad, and have been over the last four or five years, that we used to always talk 1%, 2%, or 3%, right, or 4% or 5%, actually, five years ago. But because the Fed rates have been so low, they went down to 0 to 25 basis points, which is only a quarter of a percent, and down to 0%. So if you invest in certain treasuries or agencies, you could be earning nothing, 0%. So because it's only a percentage of 1%, they're called basis points.
So in the Liquid Series.
To four pennies, four dollars, if you want to think of it.
In the Liquid Series, the city's liquid assets are deposited, and then we work kind of off of that account.
Right.
So we don't, if you write a check, you're not having to transfer money back and forth.
Yeah, there's actually, so we don't have check, we don't have check writing services. We do have some people that have a check writing service through US Bank. So what happens is, US Bank is the depository bank for the MOSIT program, so that's who we use as for the MOSIT program, and then we invest all the funds. So if you wanted to have a check writing account while using your money from the MOSIT fund, you could do that, but it would be through US Bank. If you want to move money in and out of the MOSIT program, you would do that through either wire or ACH, so it's all electronic. Now, if you're not comfortable with electronic, that's why we have somebody on the phone line that will help you move those monies. You cannot move money without, from, you know, from the city's account to John's account. It must be from city of Ballen's account to a city of Ballen's account, so.
But there's no limit or cost associated with those transactions?
No, any money moving in or out from the MOSIT program is no cost. If your bank charges you on wires coming in, or ACH is coming in, we can't prevent that. But from our side, there's no cost, no. No cost for using the online system, no cost for wires or ACHs, no cost for investing the funds. On the Term Series, and we also do CDs, so we shop the market for you on CDs, and we actually shopped over 16 of the top 18 brokers across the country. And because we're investing anywhere from $1 to $2 billion a day, we get preferred rates, needless to say, because of the amounts that we're investing. And on every single bid, we don't take access ever to your money, we don't ever take access to the security. It goes directly from the broker to the trust and custody on your behalf. But what we do do is, we are basically trying to get the best rate for you. And if your auditors ever come in and they say, you know, we want proof that you actually got more than three bids, we get a minimum of three bids, which is what was required for government entities. But sometimes we might have up to eight, or nine, or 12 bids, because if we're not happy, that we don't feel the three bids were really good bids, we go back out again searching for more bids for you, to get you the best rate possible. Sometimes we'll even come to you and say, you know, the rates aren't really good today, if you can wait till tomorrow morning, because first thing in the morning between 8:00 and 10:00 is when you get the best rates, because that's when the banks or brokers are coming looking for the money the most. If you wait till the afternoon, the rates have gone down quite a bit. Any other?
What you're talking about now is the Term Series, right?
Yes, yes, correct.
Okay, competitive interest rates, do you have an idea of what, what kind of ratio we're getting on the Term Series? I think you were talking about Liquid.
So, well, the Liquid Series is like the four basis points, if you think four, and then the Term Series, depending on how long you want to go out, so if you're only going out three or four months, you might get 20 basis points. If you're going out, you know, six months, it's around 26, 28 basis points. And then if you go out further, a lot of people right now haven't gone out past the year, but you could end up getting, you know, 40, 50, 60 basis points. So it depends on how long, you can go out up to 18 months.
That's in today's market.
Today, right now, today.
And you said 50 basis points was not a half a percent?
Yes, correct, yeah. So right now, for four or five months, it's like a quarter of a percent, if you think of it that way.
So you're not much better than, say, the local banks?
Well, I can tell you, we're winning a lot of business. I've won over $400 million in the last, like, three weeks from local banks.
Okay.
So, a lot of the local banks are offering nine basis points, and we're at 20. So that's double, if you think of it that way, right?
That's true, that's true. I don't know why we, we made one of ours CDs, I think, and it was, do you remember what it was?
It was, it wasn't mine.
Yeah, it was, but it was more than 20.
Well, I had a CD today that was 41 basis points, so that was double to what our Term was paying.
Yeah, it was less than four.
Yeah. So it just, it's, the rates are really poor all around right now. We are hoping that they'll start to increase, we believe that the Fed will start to increase rates towards the end of this year, certainly everything is heading in that direction, that they will, the way the economy's going. So this is another option to you, that's what this is all about. It's another option of services that are provided to you. In addition to the MOSIT Liquid Series and the Term Series, what you're also getting is you're getting us, investment advisors. We're taking the fiduciary responsibility from you, away from you, we're now responsible.
The incentive for us to stop by your booth at the MML meeting, and the mayor and I talk to you, was, you know, our rates are just so miserable, we were, our incentive is to find a way to improve our return on the money that we don't use every day. Then you introduced me to the Liquid Fund, and the expectation for all of us would be that if we do something like this, we're going to do better than if we do nothing.
Right, absolutely, yes, that's correct.
Convince me that we're going to do better.
Than nothing?
Than nothing, than just doing what we're doing.
Well, I don't know what you're doing for.
We're buying CDs, and we get three bids, and take the best one, and.
Okay, and, you know, in that scenario, then include us in the bids, if you want to do that, like, just invite us in to bid as well. You have to be a member, though, before you can even bid, and as I said.
Well, membership is free, a dollar.
It costs nothing, not even a dollar to join, you know, it doesn't even cost a dollar to join. So, yeah, it doesn't cost anything, then you can include us in the bids, and then sometimes, what, we've had situations where the CDs, the Term Series is better than the CDs. So at least we've got some options of different things to offer you besides CDs. So I recommend, when you're putting a bid out, some people, what they do is in the bids, they'll say MOSIP, MOSIP, MOSIP Term, or CDs. And then that way, it allows us to offer you any of the services or products that we have, to be able to get you the best rate we can.
We've recently experienced banks not even willing to talk to us.
That's, yeah, a lot of.
They're not, they're not going to quote us anymore.
Well, they had a lot of their rules changed January 1, and so they have to now keep, before they used to keep a lot of funds off their balance sheet, and now from all the new regulations that came onboard because of everything that happened 2008 and '09, they now have to keep everything on the balance sheet, which means they also have to capitalize their funds, which means they have to buy more treasuries and agencies for any investments they do. So. So the likes of government monies, they don't want those monies anymore. We're finding out... And in fact, even some of the banks. There's two banks right now, they're actually charging you as governments. If you want to put your money in their bank, they'll charge you to put it in there. That's how much they don't want your money. Fine, put it in, but we're going to actually charge you. So you give us $100, we're giving you 90 back. So, yeah, so no. This is... It's another option. It's free. It's run and managed by all of you. You get to vote for the members of the board. You have, once a year, there is voting, so if you have people that you wanted to appoint to get on the board, you can do that. So this is really a program that's all about... It's your program. And our job is to go out there, educate you that this program exists. We're the administrators, so we manage all the account side of it. We manage the relationship between US Bank, who's the custodian agent, and then we're also the investment advisor. And not only will we help you on this, but if you've got other questions in regards to anything to do with finance, because that's what our firm does. So if it's Gatsby-related or anything that... If it's related to actual investments, we'll come out at any time and provide educational tutoring to your city, groups in your city. You know, that's what our firm does, and that's what we're hired for, to make sure that all the public entities in Missouri are know and knowledgeable about what the Missouri Constitution permits you to do when it comes to investing, to keep all the public funds safe. That's really our goal. I think we've covered a lot, really. The rest of the pages are really covering, just showing some screenshots of our electronic system. We also do offer, like, through that program is bond account management. So if you issue bonds and you pass bonds, we invest the bonds. If you invest the bonds through us, through the MOSA program, if you're a member of the MOSA program, you get arbitrage rebate for free, which is usually about $3,000 worth. So that's really good. So we'll do all your rebate for you. You also can do individual portfolios with us. If you had 15 million or more to invest, then we will do. An individual will help you cash flows, write your investment policy, and monitor your cash ongoing for you. So we provide a lot of other services, too, all in under the MOSA program.
Are there any municipalities or school districts near or around us somewhere close by that you have as a member?
School districts? We have, actually, we have most of the school districts in all of the St. Louis and greater St. Louis area. You know, Arnold School District is a member, that are all members of the program.
Cities, we only started to go out and talk to cities in the past year, year and a half since MML started to sponsor the program. They've always been able to be in the program. And City of Jennings in St. Louis has been with us for 20 years, and they love the program. We have about, I want to say about 18, 15 or 18 cities onboard now in the last, you know, 15, 14, 15 months that have come onboard. I'm trying to think, is there anyone out around here? I don't think there's anybody out around here right now. But we have the City of St. Louis, City of Jennings, City of Creve Court, City of Raytown out on the Kansas City side. Can you think of...
Yeah, City of Lawson, City of Raymore. Raymore's also on the Kansas City side.
So we can certainly provide you with a list of the cities that have already joined. We can also provide you with a full list of the members, if you would like. And how it works is, not everybody's investing all the time either. Because it's also bond money, what happens with schools, for example, is every other year, every two to three years, they borrow money for building or buses or whatever it might be. And so some of the very small school districts will only use us for bond funds, because they don't have money to invest. They're just living from day to day other than that. And then if the big schools, more so, or middle-sized schools that have money with us on a regular basis, we get their direct deposits in from the states that they receive on a monthly basis, and it gets invested right away. We would love to have you as members. As I said, it doesn't cost anything to join.
You have a sample ordinance?
We do, yes.
You can send it in.
We have a booklet here, actually, that we provide that was actually came from cities.
Oh, you have that?
Yeah. Well, no, I don't think you do, but in this booklet, and I'll give it to you and I'll tell you what's in it. It has a copy of all the ordinances, I mean, an ordinance, a sample ordinance. MML actually helped... We did the ordinance, but they helped us with the ordinance and cleaned up some of the language that they wanted to make sure it was good. And then it also has the, all the state statutes showing that you can join and become a member. And then it also has an intercooperative agreement permitting you to be a member. And then it has the information statement, which is basically the Bible about the program and everything about moving money and what all of us, our roles are that are, like the bank and the lawyer and the accountants. So it has all of our roles. And then it also has the S and P ratings and why the ratings are what they are. So this final has everything that you'd ever want to know. It's what we... The attorneys always like to see your attorney, so... Would you like one, too?
No, I want to ask you about a disclaimer that you have on this thing.
Sure.
Quote, "It is possible to lose money investing in the program. An investment in the program is not insured or guaranteed by FDIC or any other government So the city would be taking on some risk that they wouldn't be taking on if they invested in a CD guaranteed by FDIC?
So every investment you ever do is a risk, okay? So no matter what you invest in, it's a risk. As far as the CDs are concerned, CDs are FDIC insured, so you are correct. They are covered $249,000 if you invest.
I'm not arguing with you.
No, no, no.
I'm just asking, how is it possible to lose money if they go through your program?
No, so I'm just going to explain each one, because they're each different, okay? So that's the CDs. When you put money in a bank, basically, you're giving the money to the bank and you're saying, "We're trusts, you're going to give it back to us." But the Fed says, "No, these are public monies, and they must be collateralized." So the bank collateralizes those monies by buying treasuries and agencies or a letter of credit from a home loan bank. What we're doing is, we're buying those securities directly. So instead of doing collateralization of those securities, we're actually purchasing those securities on your behalf. So you own the securities. So if we didn't exist tomorrow, and US Bank didn't exist tomorrow, those securities are held in the trust and custody of US Bank in your city's name with all the MOSA members. And the Fed would come in, and they would see the program. It has a list of all the members, the pro rata share that they own, if it was the liquid series or if it's the term series, you own the investment outright. And then it's your choice, do you want to sell that investment or not? And why you can lose money or not is, if you, with any investment, even a CD, if you sell that before maturity, you could lose money. You may not. With a CD, you'll get charged a penalty by the bank, so you're going to have the three months' interest penalty that you'll get charged. But you could also have a loss of interest, because you're cashing it out early. And all investments are like that. So if you purchase a treasury and the treasury's for six months, and you decide to sell it at three months, you might sell it at a profit, so you could actually make money, or you could sell it at a loss, depending on what the rate is on that day when you're selling it. So we are registered by the SEC. We're registered SEC investment advisors, and we're regulated, very highly regulated, which means that we have to tell you all the time, be transparent. We have to tell you if you can lose money. We have to tell you if we're charging you a fee. So anything that we're doing, we have to be transparent, or Henry and I can go to jail if we don't, and it is a very serious offense. So that's where we are very different. Banks and broker-dealers don't have to tell you everything. They don't have to tell you their fees. They don't have to add any disclaimers. So it's just a very different environment, although they're coming to that stage now with, you've seen some of the new municipal advisory rules, where they have to start reporting. And they're going to be regulated like us, too, and they're going to have to pass exams. So it is getting that way, too, for them. Does that answer your question?
No, really. Because, as I understand it, you take the monies and invest in securities that are allowed investments for municipalities in Missouri.
Correct, yes.
And those are... What are they?
Treasuries, agencies, repurchase agreements, CDs, and commercial paper.
So you're indicating that the better return is because of the advantage of size?
Correct.
That you're able to purchase those same investments that maybe a local bank can only buy, just about a number of million dollars' worth. You're dealing with billions.
Well, two differences. That's one. And the other difference is, we don't hold an inventory. So we're shopping the market for you. We're going to all of the top banks and broker-dealers across the country, and we're shopping for you. With a bank or a broker-dealer, they buy their own securities. They have their own inventory. So the first thing they're going to want to sell to you is what they need to get off the books, not necessarily what's in the best interest of you or what you're going to earn the most interest on. So that's where the big difference is.
So if the city invests in a CD, under state law and Missouri Constitution, they have to somehow set aside adequate securities to pay the CD that you're...
Right.
They're going to... Well, you know, the bank will say, "We'll give you a point-whatever percent." You're saying that you're securing the city's money in the same way the bank has to set aside... Or, I'm sorry, you're saying you're not collateralizing?
No. The difference is, if you buy a CD, whether from a bank or even if it's, you're shopping the market through us, it's still with a bank. We're still going to buy that CD for you with a bank. That's FDIC insured. You don't have to worry. If you're buying something that is not FDIC insured, anything other than a CD, or you're putting your money in a bank account, it must be collateralized according to the Missouri state law. So because it's public money, it must be collateralized. The permitted collateralization in the state of Missouri, there are several different things, but the things that you should really only accept is really treasuries and agencies. Now, you can do things like serenity bonds and other, you know, other things that I would not advise to take as collateral, but really, you should be looking at treasuries and agencies or a letter of credit from a home loan bank. That is what most of the banks use anyway, but they have to buy that. And that could cost them 10 or 15 basis points to buy that collateral for you. So they're going to charge you for that. So they're going to deduct that off of whatever rate they're going to give you, and that's going to bring your rate down. We are going out and actually buying that security directly, and you're getting that rate that we get. So let's say we get 20 basis points for that treasury or agency. We're passing that to you for 20 basis points. With the bank, and this is through the program now, with the bank, they are going to, they have to first pay for the collateral fees. Why the collateral ends up cheaper, why there's no collateral in here is because it's in a pro rata share. You own a pro rata share of these securities directly. There's no middleman, if you want to think of it that way.
Yeah, that's the next question. So how do you make money?
So how we make money is, we are paid by the program. And so the program is $1 billion or $1.5 billion, whatever it gets up to. We're paid a fee based off of whatever is in the balances that are in the program. So right now, because the rates have been so low, we've actually been waiving a lot of our fees in the last four years, because we've been doing this program for 23 years. And so we believe that it's going to come back and get better as rates increase, because five years ago was paying 5 percent. We believe it is going to be better.
So MOSA Board hires you as the manager?
Yes, correct. And so because we believe in the program so much, as crazy as it sounds, we actually are waiving an awful lot of our fees right now to be able to even give you that four basis points. If we didn't waive our fees, and actually, the bank, the custody bank is also waiving a lot of their fees, that rate would be like minus 20 basis points. You'd be paying us. But because we believe in the program a lot, that's what we've been doing. And we believe this is going to come back, but we get paid by all of you putting your funds in together. And when the rates are higher, we're paid a basis points off of those, off of the rates. Right now, that's hard to do with where they're at.
I'm sorry, you get paid by who?
Members.
Well, it's by the program.
But there's no fee?
It's by the overall program. So it's net of fees, remember? To you, the member, it's net of fees. So if it's being charged, if there's a charge for overall services for the whole program to pay the attorneys, the auditors, the investment advisors, the custodian bank, if that's 25 basis points to pay all of those people, right? What they do is, we are making money on interest, on the investments. So we're shopping the market, getting the best rate we possibly can. The fees are taken off, and then we're providing that rate to you. But right now, because the fees are so, the rate is so bad, we're waiving a lot of those fees so that we can give you some rate, because otherwise, there would be no rate. Because we want the program to stay going and get it back to where it was at 5 percent, hopefully, in a couple of years. So, but that's how we get paid. We get paid by the good investments that we invest in by shopping the market, and then there's a fee taken off of that for the overall program. So the larger the program is, if it gets to $2 billion, then the pro rata, the fees don't go up. The pro rata share is so much, so much better for all of you, because you're going to earn all that extra interest that we're shopping the market for, for you.
So right now, we have CDs in the bank. We don't... What kind of fees do we pay for just the local CDs?
Sue picks up the phone when one matures. She calls three or four banks, gets quotes, gives it to the one...
So with them, we could get more.
Arguably.
But it's going to lose sound because of the fees we pay them.
No, we... For us, there would be...
Yeah. What would happen is, if you did the same thing, let's say you do the same thing, and you ask four people to bid now, you decide to ask five people, MOSA. So you send the bids out to five people, four banks and MOSA. We're going to bid as well. And so we may have better rates for certain time periods, and others may not be as good. Because what sometimes will happen in a local bank, especially if it's a small bank, if they are down funds at that time and they need money for lending purposes, let's say they've got 10 loan applications for mortgages in that month, they may need some money to lend out, because they have to keep a certain percentage of balances. So they might offer 1 percent, freaky rate, 1 percent in a time when it's only four basis points. So we tell you, jump at that, because that's what you should do. And we actually tell you that if we know that's what it is. Sometimes you'll hear of a really great rate, and, you know, if it sounds too good to be true, a lot of times, it is too good to be true, so we just tell you to question that. But little, small banks, we've seen them offer 1 percent, 1 and 1/4, because they need the money. And it might be just for 30 days, and then it's gone again. So all we say is, invite us in to bid. It doesn't cost you anything to join. It doesn't cost you anything to add someone else to your list, to invite them to bid, and maybe you can earn some better rates.
And I think, should we... Should you choose to do this, I'm going to walk before I run.
Yeah.
I think that would be our initial effort, which is, we'd see if they can do better than our local sources for the more secure investment.
All right. Yeah, it does sound like there's a whole lot of downside to this thing for us, so it sounds like you do better, so... Well, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for having us down. We appreciate it.
Break it. Play that.
I've got two minutes.
Yeah, they do. Yeah. 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 Yeah.
big band sound from the swing era, tunes of the '30s, '40s, and a few others. So let's go party!
It's a very pleasant evening, ladies and gentlemen. For you listening and dancing quietly, which I have private orchestra, we can hear the big band sound from the swing era, tunes of the '30s, '40s, and a few others. So let's go party! I couldn't have done it that well. We'd like to make this a medley of two. We'd like to call on the band to come up and do a wonderful thing. It's usually done with a big symphony orchestra, we'd like to do it with a nine-piece band. Rhapsody! Woo! Thank you, Joe.
(inaudible) United States of America, and a republic for its change, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Grimacher.
Here.
Alderwoman Codwell.
Here.
Alderman Couch.
Here.
Alderman John Stupi.
Here.
Alderman Donald Stupi.
Harris.
Alderman Hough.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman Ross.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Google Lady Jenna.
Move through.
All in favor?
Aye.
Repose? Okay, tonight, Mr. Alan Wells, who's the director of the St. Francis, St. Genevieve County 911 office, is here to talk to the board and answer any questions that the board has, because you have a ordinance on the agenda tonight to approve the funding. So, Mr. Wells, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Pleasure to be here with you, and thanks for the invite to be here with you all this evening. Yes, basically, I'll field questions, but I'm sure you've all heard of some transitioning that happened in St. Francis County due to the hemorrhaging and loss of landline revenues, more so in St. Francis County than St. Genevieve was affected. But it forced us to, to look at our finance and our funding rapidly. And in doing so, it was put on the ballot to move St. Francis County to a local sales tax, and do away with the funding of the landline, fee off of the landline telephone. And so that was done and passed in November. So to go into effect, as of January 1, the county commission voted to move St. Francis County to a legal tax district, so... Which moves it totally under the authority of an elected board, as opposed to the appointed board form of operation, which we were under. So that election process is underway, it'll be in April, and to get seven candidates selected to be the elected board over the legal district, the new district. That will alleviate the county and the county commission from any authority over the district. They will have full, total authority out from underneath the county commission. So how that affects St. Genevieve County was in our contract agreement with you all, that St. Genevieve County had, when we were both... An appointed board had an appointment of five voting seats. Well, St. Genevieve won't have that authority to have an appointment to vote over St. Francis County's legal tax district. So it's created some interest and some concern. How it will really affect, we have a contract, a present contract. It's an annual contract with St. Genevieve County to provide the services, that I do not see that contract being affected in any way, but it may, until the new board's in place and elected, and they make a decision whether to allow any voting positions, or to allow to continue with the contract as is, which I expect they fully will, and to but to make a non-voting committee to underneath the elected board. How that's going to fall out, I don't know, until that board gets elected. But anyway, I just wanted to be here today, field any questions with you all, and just kind of bring you up to speed, let you know what's happening. I think the consolidation was a good move for everyone. It certainly kept your expenses low, and much cheaper than trying to continue with the independent operation which you were under with the county here before. The cost would certainly be costing a lot more for you today to keep that operation independent the way it was. So your costs have certainly been cheaper, and I think we certainly brought a, a better quality service to you as well. So with that being said, I don't, don't foresee the contract agreement being affected, other than how it's going to affect the representation. That's to be addressed yet after the board is elected in April.
The board elected by the total population in St. Francis County, is it a...
It'll be a seven-panel board, one member at large, which will cover the entire county, and then, there's two districts. So the other three, three will be elected out of District 1 and three out of District 2.
There's like 20 people running for that board, aren't there?
There are, many, yes, and which I'm excited about. I do know most, all of them personally, and I think they all have best interest at hand and at stake, so...
Don't forget, Cora, you might forget.
Did they, by doing that, by passing that tax, did it eliminate the charge on the phone bill?
It will. It was passed on the ballot, allowing it to stay in place up to a year, or until the board deems financially stable or secure. Or, and by statutes, it allows that window, but until those revenues start, the taxpayers won't start paying it until April, so it won't be remitted back to the district from the state until probably May or June, before we see any of that money to come back. But then, the board will be... Had been elected and in place, and they can determine to stop it immediately, they can... I know they're going to want to roll it back as soon as possible, but it must be stopped by the end of the year.
What happens if, and I guess, so maybe the last time you were here, you talked about nine... About fees on cell phones for 911. If that ever happens, and that would be at state level, correct?
That will be... It's twofold.
Okay.
And I'm active on that committee still, with working on that legislation. We do have a bill in the House this year already, and it's coming up for a hearing in front of the telecom committee next Wednesday at 9:00 a.m. And it's House Bill 714. There is a light bill on the Senate side in, and that's Senate Bill 406, I believe. And so, it... If it's successful in passing, and we feel very good about it this year, even stronger than, than last, but if it were successful in the passing, what it will do, and where it's twofold, is once the state passes it, it will automatically implement a, a tax of 3% at the time of sale on prepaid devices, Go-phones, and then, when you add minutes to those monthly, the only way to capture those prepaid devices is at the time of sale. So the state is automatically going to be implementing that component, that's in a statewide tax. 30% of wireless devices in Missouri are Go-phones and prepaid phones. So that's been one of our stumbling blocks to get across, because that's going to be automatic across the whole state. And the other component, which is the main component that we're really concerned and tried to get through, was allowing a county the option to ask its voters on a county level to change from your present funding method under a landline over to... It's not really just a wireless, it will cover everything, any technology that accesses 911. So then, your landline would fall under this new statute as well, if your citizens voted. So they would still pay a fee on their landline, but probably at a much cheaper rate than they are today. And then, the same parity would be on... That rate would be the same on wireless technologies.
What happens? What happens to your sales tax then, in St. Francis County?
This is strictly another option to the county. It's nothing mandatory, other than the 30... The 3% at time of sale on Go-phones and prepaid devices. That will be a statewide mandatory.
You would have to vote to appeal.
And that, that will be non-voted. That is strictly being passed legislatively. And then, regardless if you change your present funding method or not, or even if you're a county under a sales tax like we are now, you still are eligible to get that state tax back.
Right, but as far as imposing a tax on cellphone usage at the local level, you can't double up.
Can't double up there, on a local level. It just gives you another option, and like for us, now that we just converted to a sales tax, it has a grandfather of seven years. So in seven years, we have to take it back to the voters in St. Francis County. And so, we'll have an option then, if this passes, to say, "Okay, voters, here's another option," as opposed to local sales tax, "Would you consider paying a fee on all technology or devices?" And convert, it's a conversion. But it's not mandatory that a county use it. It's just going to be another option available to you. And the ones that are strictly funded off of landline only, it's going to be a good, viable option. And there's still 17 counties in Missouri who have zero funding, and they do not have enhanced 911 in place at all in their counties.
So the... How will they split up the 30%?
The 30%, if it's a Class 1 county, and they're specifically stating St. Louis and the urban areas, will get 85% that's generated out of their district or their county will roll back to them, and 15% will stay in the state grant fund. The other counties, Class 3 and 4 counties, I think it's the equation, and here, I'm at a loss, I think it's like 45% or something like that, can be an automatic... Or 45... Yeah, 45% will be an automatic rollback, and to what was generated out of your county, and then, you're eligible then to apply into the grant fund for upgraded equipment, purchase of 911 equipment, for training of your 911 staff and personnel. But you must, there's going to be some hurdles in there you've got to jump to get the money. You must keep your staff at the state standards of 911 requirements and training.
So it'll be based on those phones that are sold in that particular county? It'll be based on the phones that are sold, the Go-phones that are sold in that county?
From the revenue that's remitted out of your county, yes. So you're eligible for 45% of that back, and then, you're eligible to apply into the state grant fund annually, every year. Now, if this grant fund is not utilized totally every year, then annually, this, this committee over it must roll back to the counties, and that percentage rate back to your county as well. So it can never build into a... So it can never build into a slush fund. But that's positive, and again, we encourage you to look at that up and talk to your state reps on that issue and your senators right now.
The fact that we are using you, and obviously there's other counties around the state that are going together, does ours, would our, would that fee fall into, how would the sales in St. Genevieve County affect?
Then the county can use that money to meet this contractual obligation.
Okay.
Of, for services. Now, one other caveat in the statutes, that's Class 3 and 4 counties must consolidate, or there's a population minimum in there that will allow a county to have a minimum of one 911 answering point within that county and not anymore, to be eligible for those funds, or to even convert under that funding mechanism.
Okay.
So there's not a lot of duplicated cost to the citizens. Any other questions? Anytime, you're welcome to come over and visit, and if you have any questions, my door's always open, or call, and feel free to look me up, and I'll be happy to answer them for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Dave Van Leer from Cochrane Associates to give us an update on the water mains project.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Pretty brief update tonight. We're still working with city staff, trying to hammer all the details of the plans, come up with a schedule for the project. We've given plans to the alliance staff to review. We've been working with them to get the plans developed. Really, that's all I have to report for tonight. If anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to answer anything you may have.
Where's the creek crossing you have?
Steve, can you help me out with the creek that way?
On the update, if you got here, there's, you had to get a permit for the creek crossing.
I apologize, I can't.
Well, I'm just curious, well, we got a couple of creeks in town, so I guess.
Yeah, anytime we cross a creek that essentially has water any time of the year, we have to get a permit from the Corps. Very simple process. There's really no danger of being denied the permit, it's just a process we have to go through with the Corps of Engineers. We do plan on, once the plans are close to finalizing, giving the city an opportunity to look at them, to see where the mains are running, so we can, we'll make sure we point that out and clarify exactly where that is.
Yeah. Steve, is that down on Seventh Street?
Yeah, that's over by your property there. All of South, yeah, we're in.
Yeah, of course.
Okay, we're still talking about construction this summer, aren't we?
That's the goal, yeah.
Anybody, anything? Thanks for, thanks for coming down.
Okay, thank you.
Martin?
Okay. We received the bids for the demolition of the structures. They're significantly higher than I had expected. I'm not sure whether my expectations were based on the wrong information or what. And so I wanted to present them to you, to get kind of your direction, since it's probably $14,000 more than I thought it was going to be, if you still want to proceed with the demolition of both structures. To do so, we would require a budget amendment, because we haven't budgeted this, and it would be moved from our anticipated general revenue carryover to this particular line item.
Do we want to go ahead with it?
That's the question.
I don't think we have any options.
Okay.
Let's figure out where we can get the...
I will take the lowest and best bid.
So that was 14 on, for both?
Both.
Well, that's, that's not bad, really.
No, 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 no. He's 14. He was, he was, it's 14,000 higher than what he was expecting.
I know, for both of them.
Yes. I was thinking the two could get done for 24, and obviously they can't get done for 24.
It comes in at 38.
Yeah. I don't think that's that bad. Especially the one, the one on Merchant Street, that's going to be tough.
That's hard work, because it's...
With all them, with those other two houses right against it, that's...
Okay, well, I will proceed. You can expect to see a contract for that at your next meeting.
Let's do it.
The, we've been talking to the hospital administrator about the, and the Riverview Nursing Home owner, about the modifications to our TIF language. The city attorney questioned whether modifications could be done without a public hearing, since the original agreement was established after public hearings and a vote by the Board of Alderman. So the hospital and their legal counsel are currently looking into that in consultation with the city attorney, and they'll make a decision, and we'll advise you at a future meeting as to how we're going to proceed on that. We executed the contract with Textcaster. It's now linked to the St. Genevieve City website, so if anyone's interested in receiving text notices about city services and activities, you can go to www.stegenevee.org and click on the link. You get a page that looks like this, I'll pass this around. And I want to thank Alderman Prince for his active interest in this, because we had asked a lot of questions, because he was asking a lot of questions. And so you don't have to take everything. You can sign up, click on just what you want. So if you're not interested in street closures, don't click, you don't have to click that. And then you'll just end up getting whichever is appropriate for your account.
I like how there was a lot of options to pick what exactly you want to receive.
Yeah, you've been to the website?
Mm-hmm, I've already gotten a couple of text notifications.
I got, it's only been up a couple of days, but I've had three comments, the fourth, all of whom said, "I like the options." So it's the best part of the program.
The school, for example, I get the same kind of thing, signed up for them, and you get all the ballot scores, and, you know, maybe my kid's in football, but not basketball, so I want to know football scores, but not basketball. It'd be nice to choose one or the other, instead of getting them all, so I really like that.
You know, we, earlier, and since it's no secret now, you know, we, the Industrial Wellness Corporation agreed to assist us in helping cover any cash flow needs we may have for the TIFT because of the commitment that we've made. And I've also met with the Community Service Foundation. We had been making a payment to them in May, and so they've agreed to delay that payment to the end of the year. You should look forward to an agreement on your next agenda that memorializes our agreement with the Community Center Foundation Board. I'd like to talk about the property acquisition in closed session. There aren't any real big issues, but I'd like to inform you about some things particularly with, related to the lease, that should be done in closed sessions. The, Citizen Electric is, and this doesn't directly relate to us, they're putting in a new transmission line in the western part of the county, so as far as the construction, it doesn't relate to us. But I met with the county, and they outlined it to us, and the importance of it for the city is that it's a, it's like a looping of water lines. It kind of completes their, the integration of their system, so that they can route service in the event of a disruption through other alternate, alternate ways. And so for us, again, we won't see the construction or have any part in its approval, but when they complete it, it'll be more reliable service for everybody. So it was kind of a, kind of a good meeting. I, following Dave's presentation, you know, we have previously authorized ARRA funding of $2 million, and we only spent $1,004 out of that. We've got about a little more than that, $500,000 that we can issue out of that voter-approved debt. But that doesn't cover the ultimate cost of what's being proposed and designed by them. So I've advertised for financial advisors, who will work on a fee basis to identify sources of financing for the balance of that. Most likely, and I put certificates of appreciation, that's wrong, it's certificates of participation, is the instrument that's traditionally used to do public improvements that are paid from the revenue of those improvements, and that's probably what we'll be looking at for that Finally, Alderman Stupi called me about the possibility of putting control arms at the crossing at 10th Street, and I took the liberty of sending an email to the guy I thought was the business manager, because the one we've been speaking to for the last year. And they change people at these railroads, like, every day it's a new person. So I got a response from Matt Eishem, who is now the business manager, regarding the crossing issues that we've had, both here at 4th Street and 10th Street, and the possibility of control arm. On the control arm, he said, "It's not up to us, it's up to MODA. They control, dictate when and where we should put crossings." So I will take that information to my next meeting of the Transportation Advisory Committee. We have, we have those meetings once a quarter, and see if we can't get the area district engineer to start the process of investigating control arms at that intersection. Any questions?
We have staff reports tonight, the reports from the board. Okay, all right, we'll go right into the minutes of regular meeting of January 22nd. All in favor? Repose? And Pam's going to pass out the close, they're all together, all the three closed session minutes, so. Look first at the January 22nd one. Motion to approve. All in favor? Repose? And then we're going to go back to the January 19th closed session minutes.
Making a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor? Repose? And the special meeting, February the 5th.
Move to approve.
Second. All in favor? Repose? And the closed session, February the 5th.
Move to approve.
Second. All in favor? Repose? Thank you. Pass them back up if you would. Okay, Resolution 2015-16, resolution authorizing the 1995 Jeep and the 1995 Ford F-250 to be declared surplus property and providing further authority. Move to approve. Second. All in favor? Repose? Okay, old business, Bill Number 4004, second reading.
An ordinance ratifying the local designation of existing historic districts to the St. Genevieve Landmark Register. Move to approve.
Second. Roll call.
Alderman Codwell? Yes. Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Ross?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero noes. Bill Number 4004 now becomes ordinance 3944.
Okay, thank you. Bill Number 4005, second reading.
An ordinance repealing Chapter 410 of the St. Genevieve Municipal Code in its entirety and enacting in lieu thereof a new Chapter 410 Historic Preservation. Move to approve.
City Attorney asks, I'll just clarify, that if you look at the ordinance, you should look under repair on page five, and the last sentence of that addresses what you can do if you're in a building and you have a window of a certain type, and you want to replace it, and it identifies replacement of existing nonoriginal materials with materials of the same type as a repair. And then, since it's a repair, it's not included in the four items that are required for a certificate of appropriateness. So you don't have to come to the Heritage Commission to get approval, to take out windows that you have, and replace it with windows of similar materials.
So this is actually an amendment to the Bill 4005 that you had a first reading of, so I guess technically you should vote, or move to amend the bill to accept that new language, and then vote on it as a second reading.
I move to amend Bill 4005 to accept the new language.
Second.
That language is also under ordinary maintenance as well. That same statement is under ordinary maintenance, so that that would be an amendment from the vote for reading as well.
So I expect that she wants to include that.
I would like to include both amendments in my motion.
Second. Motion to amend Bill Number 4005. All in favor? Repose? These things are the same.
We're voting on the amended bill, second resubmission.
The other issue is, I'd like you to address this. It's not related to...
It's not called here. Until we have the Heritage Commission in place, the Landmarks Commission no longer exists. And so, right now, we have a couple of small projects that are kind of looming, waiting for some decision. And so I was wondering if it would be possible for either of us to make some sort of statement about letting me, or Martin, or both of us, look at projects until the Heritage Commission is actually in place, because we don't want to hold these folks up for their projects. So we have one where they want to replace steps from one material to another, one wants to replace a fence from, on Memorial, from one material to another, and the ammonia building, the addition came off, and that exposed a wall at Candle Corner, and they want to put materials up that we, you know, they just want to put up some vinyl siding, that that would be nonoriginal materials or materials that we've seen there. So we have three projects right now, and I don't know how many more we'll get in before we have a full Heritage Commission staff, so I feel like we need to be able to do something.
I jumped in here, unfortunately, so let's hold off that.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's it.
Oh, I thought you all did that. I'm sorry.
He said you come up with it.
You have the original motion that you made, and you second the original one, too. You're both okay with that, on the, on passing 4005, okay? All right, now we'll do roll call, unless anybody else had any other questions. Good? Now do roll call, Pam.
Alderman Ross?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Alderman Codwell?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero noes. Bill Number 4005 now becomes ordinance 3945.
Okay. Now, Petrie.
Well, you just heard this being, so.
Okay.
The question is, what can we do in the interim while we're...
What can we do?
All right, you can, can't we give either this... All right, you can, can't we give either this board do the approval or give them temporary authority to make the approval?
Would these actions fall within the ordinance 4005 even though you don't have the board?
Yes, they would, all of these actions would have required approval by the commission, and since we don't have a commission...
Oh, they would have.
Yes, they would have been, they would be required to be reviewed by the commission. Again, the commission would be following the design guidelines, and I think on these particular projects wouldn't be too hard to do at this point. And I think we could anticipate approval of really all of them. So I just don't want to leave, I don't know how long it's going to be, and so I'd like to be able to tell these folks something so they can have their projects approved or not.
Since the ordinance provides for an appeal to the board, absent a seated Heritage Commission, could we just come straight to the board for approval at our next meeting?
Well, we could have just said, "This ordinance shall become effective immediately upon the appointment of a board," and proceeded under the old ordinance, if that's what you want to do. But I don't think you can eliminate the board involvement in the decision, a board involvement in the decision-making. And I don't know what we're going to do here.
By the passage of this, though, haven't we eliminated this?
Yeah.
The new board is gone already.
They're prepared to wait.
I will say they're prepared to wait, and hopefully, I said, within thirty days.
Can you expedite this new board?
Try. We've got a few people that...
Should we figure it out, vote at the next meeting?
I think it would be cleaner if you just keep those on hold, try to get your board appointed, and then comply with your new ordinance, because...
That's fine. Be happy to tell them.
You can't market it still, I'm sorry.
Well, that's another approach. If the mayor decides to dwell on the issue, your old board is still in existence until he signs the bill. What's quicker? I mean, can you actually have a meeting with your old board and conduct this business? Probably not.
I think I could get them together. Obviously, that they're being retired, and so I can't predict if they'll...
It'd be cleaner if you just tried to get your board, your board appointed as quickly as...
Sure, they would be helpful, but...
All right. Okay, we'll do that. Okay, new business, bill number 4007, first reading.
An ordinance approving the purchase of a 2006 Chevy Silverado 2500 HD Series truck from the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, St. Louis, Missouri, in an amount not to exceed $14,500.
Well, you know it's got to be a good truck.
It's just, oh, it's church and back.
I'll make a motion.
Can I ask a question first?
Sure.
What happened to 4006? Bill number, it's one from 4005 to 4007.
That was taken care of at the special meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
We're making a motion, so...
Okay. Any other discussion on that? Okay, all in favor, first reading? Opposed?
Move for a second reading.
Second.
All in favor, second reading of 4007? Opposed? Okay, second reading, bill number 4007.
An ordinance approving the purchase of a 2006 Chevy Silverado 2500 HD Series truck from the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, St. Louis, Missouri, in an amount not to exceed $14,500.
I think that'd be a really good truck. Are they going to use the snowplow and everything?
Pardon?
Are they going to use the snowplow?
Comes with a snowplow, and it'll be available.
Are they going to use it, though?
Yes. It'll be available to us to use when it snows.
Was that a motion, Rick?
Did you make a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion for the second reading.
Roll call.
Make a motion for approval.
Yeah, approval for the second reading.
Okay.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Alderman Codwell?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Ross?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero noes. Bill number 4007 now becomes ordinance 3946.
Thank you. Bill number 4008, first reading.
An ordinance approving a bid proposal from Microcom of Olathe, Kansas, for the replacement upgrade of the SCADA control panel at the water plant, in an amount not to exceed $42,499.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, two... Something we want to do.
Do they need this right away, or...
Yeah, I make a motion to have a second reading.
Second.
All in favor, second reading of 4008?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, second reading, bill number 4008.
An ordinance approving a bid proposal from Microcom of Olathe, Kansas, for the replacement upgrade of the SCADA control panel at the water plant, in an amount not to exceed $42,499.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Ross?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Codwell?
Yes.
Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero noes. Bill number 4008 now becomes ordinance 3947.
Okay, thank you. Bill number 4009, first reading.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the city of St. Genevieve and St. Genevieve County to assist in the funding and cooperation of a St. Genevieve County Recycling Center.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor? Opposed?
I'd like to report, I attended a meeting of the Community Services Foundation where a number of people have used the recycling center under the new regime, and they were very complimentary in how it's organized.
I like it. It'll be a lot better. Okay. Bill number 4010, first reading.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the city of St. Genevieve and St. Genevieve County regarding 911 dispatching services for the calendar year 2015.
Can I make a motion to approve?
Second.
I have a question. Under number three, city responsibilities, the math is not quite right. It notes the estimated sum of $79,218, but it actually adds up to $81,411.76. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Oh, you got the year.
Oh, yeah, calendar year.
That's probably what it was for that calendar year.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pam.
Okay. Any other motion?
Motion to subdue.
All in favor? Opposed? Okay, bill number 4011, first reading.
An ordinance of the city of St. Genevieve authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement for engineering services for the Crest Lawn Cemetery Entrance Road and Service Road Reconstruction Project with Bear Engineering, OLCF Perryville, Missouri, in an amount not to exceed $17,100.
Before you vote, that amount would be if we did everything, but we've already discussed that we're probably just going to be able to do the main road, and that amount will go down to reflect the actual dollar of the work being done.
Moved to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Okay, bill number 4012, first reading.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign a warranty deed transferring the ownership of Yanks North Ball Field to the St. Genevieve R2 School District, subject to performance of a survey and preparation of a legal description.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? I don't know if you want to, or you want to, if you feel it's important enough to wait, but they were going to have a board meeting in school district on Tuesday of next week, and I know he was trying to work up, since the county had done their part, they're trying to work up bid proposals for maintenance, and they were trying, instead of trying to separate him, not knowing for sure that he could count on us, that he was actually going to have to come up with two if we took too long to do it.
So you need a second reading?
If you wanted to do two.
Motion to make a second reading?
Yeah. If it's all right with everybody.
Yeah, it's fine.
So somebody will make a motion.
I just did.
All right. All in favor, second reading of 4012? Opposed? Okay, second reading, bill number 4012.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign a warranty deed transferring the ownership of Yanks North Ball Field to the St. Genevieve R2 School District, subject to performance of a survey and preparation of a legal description.
Motion to approve.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Codwell?
Yes.
Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Ross?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero noes. Bill number 4012 now becomes ordinance 3948.
Thank you. Bill number 4013, first reading.
An ordinance approving a bid proposal from Flun Drilling Company from Troy, Missouri, for the installation of a turnkey newly constructed Olivia Public Water Supply Well in an amount not to exceed $132,997.
Where's this well being drilled?
Steve, he asked where the well was going to actually be?
Well, it would be located in the current well field that we operate out of now.
Do you, just curiosity, do you have to determine where that spot is? Or, I mean, or do you just, as long as it's somewhere in that area?
That's in the engineering part of it.
Okay, just curious. And this will, according to your, according to the ordinance, is going to replace the, you're going to abandon number six? According to this, if you're going to abandon well number six, and it'll be, you won't use it, be capped off, or...
Correct, yes. It'll be deemed out of service and abandoned.
Moved to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? All right, bill number 4014, first reading.
An ordinance recognizing the St. Genevieve Community Access Cable Board, approving its bylaws and setting forth its rights and obligations under the city's cable television franchise ordinance.
Motion to approve. Second.
Before voting, I'd like to point out that we had some discussion about the role of the Board of Aldermen in consultation with the current board members who made some amendments to what you looked at the first time. Under 3.2 terms in election, the board is nominated by the mayor and approved with the advice and consent of the Board of Aldermen from nominations made by the Cable Access Board of Directors. Should there be reason to ask for removal of a person for nonperformance, the Cable Board would pass a resolution recommending it and would come back to you for your consideration. And on the last page, under amendments, the bylaws require action of the Board of Aldermen in order for them to be changed in the future.
Motion to approve.
Oh, we had that, right. I think we got a motion and a second. So, all in favor? Opposed? Okay. Public comments, anyone? Yeah, Gary.
Yeah, I just let you know that we've got to go over there. You know how that works, though. Okay, Jerry Whitner, chairman of the Cable Board. One, I wanted to say something is to tell you all, give you illustrations of our new logo. I know one of the members said something about why they changing it from 798 to 990 and 991. That wasn't our doing. That was Charter Cable. They're the ones that signed us the channel numbers. So we came up with a different design. The board approved it, the mayor and Toma, all of them, and Joe Prince was there, and they looked at it, of course Buck was there, too. He's on our liaison on our board. And we've got the signs up. If you look at the door, and look at the entrance, and look at the sign, they're already put up. I had them put up Tuesday, okay? So officially, that's our new logo, okay? And the other thing is, I know it's just not a time to give a full report, but we are working on improving the new studio, or the studio that Don's working in, upgrading it and everything. And we've had modern communications come down, and we're getting bids on how to improve that and fix it up to where we won't have any problems with these changes the charter has given us. We did have some trouble there right first because they were giving the wrong boxes and so forth, and we've got, pretty well got that zeroed in now. But that is our new logo, and we'll be promoting that and future promos about the station in coming months.
Good job, man. Good job.
Well, somebody else? Yes, sir. Jerry?
Jerry Klein, 699 La Porte Street. It may be a mute issue because we, I know you guys just had a second reading on the Yanks Field, but is it proper to at least ask what, why, why the city? I don't follow this all the time, but when I saw this, I was going to come down and make some kind of comment and then do some research, but now that it's already passed and stuff, I know that that ball field has been there for years. I know that the, back years ago, that the electric company reduced the rate on the lights, but what was the reason why the city wanted to get rid of the ball field to the schools?
There was, first of all, I'll try to answer that. There was a number of reasons that was brought up. One was that the school district was contemplating building their own fields, which would have amounted to a baseball field and a softball field, which they weren't real sure that they had the space to be able to build both of them, and the fact that they could end up being down on a flood plain. And after discussions with them, and I think if we both looked at the use of taxpayers' money, it made sense that why have two fields sitting up there not being played on at times and then have two more fields that would be sitting and wouldn't be needed at the other times? Well, certainly, I know it would cost probably somewhere between a million and a half and $2 million to build two baseball fields. So that discussion led into, well, why wouldn't, why not just deed these over to them with the understanding that they would still provide all the services to the city and the county that were given in the last 20 years to the youth to be able to play on those fields in the summer? The only improvements gotten in the last 12 years, anyway that I know of, that's been done in Yanks Field has been because of the Yanks taking the money that they've been making off the concession stands and making the improvements to the field, along with grant, some grant money from the community foundation. The city hasn't been able to afford to pay, to make any improvements on the field. Also, the Rotary Club, in the last couple of years, made some improvements to Leon's Field, but it's not in that great a shape either. We felt that the school district would have the ability to make improvements and to continue to maintain the fields better than what the city could, offer a better product, and still offer this, again, offer the same services that they've been offering for years that they've been doing. The county has wanted to get rid of the fields. We were in the process a couple of years ago of them deeding them over to us, and we just never... of them deeding them over to us, and we just never did get the survey completely done, so I can't speak for the county, but they were more than willing to get rid of the field. We just felt that it would be, it would save, it will save on our budget. They've agreed to take over all of the maintenance of the field, maintenance even during the summer. So it will save on our deficit park budget that we don't, that we've always had to supplement with general revenue funds, where maybe we can now take some of that money and make some other park improvements. So I don't think anything's gonna change, other than I think things are gonna improve, and they made the commitment that, again, things in the summer would stay the same, so.
I'd like to add to that. They're pledging to maintain this property for the purposes of public recreation for the citizens of St. Genevieve. Should they fail to do that, there'll be a provision in the deed that calls for the property to revert to the city.
And Jerry, I'm also like you, I, when this first came up, I had some concern about this also, about turning city property over to someone. But after talking to the Yanks, they're tired, they're done. You know, there's not many members left, they're tired, they don't wanna mess with this anymore. After speaking with the school, I come to the conclusion that they're gonna take better care of it than what we are taking right now. They'll do a better job.
I respect what you have to say, Rick. And I just would mention that I know those fields are, if not the nicest fields in southeast Missouri, one of the nicest fields in southeast Missouri. It was, to me, it was always a hallmark of St. Genevieve to have such nice fields, and I still believe, you know, they'll be maintained and everything else. But I was looking at that as a city owned. And that being said, bode well for our city, and it looked great when people came to town. And I, I really expected this to be one reading tonight. Maybe talk to some people and get some input from other people. I didn't expect the second reading and this to go down tonight. But, but I just, I just, I know that years ago, there was a lot of people that helped maintain those fields before the Yanks, and it was done participation-wise, and they did turn out to be, that field especially, turned out to be what I consider a, just a focal point of St. Genevieve.
You gotta understand though, Jerry, that that interest is waning now, okay? It's fallen by the wayside quite a bit. And like I said, the Yanks are tired. They were all in favor of getting it to the school district. All in favor.
And Jerry, you're absolutely right. My kids play baseball, both of them, and it is one of the nicest fields in southeast Missouri, and there's no question about that. It, there are some issues that I'm sure are gonna get addressed that we are not gonna be able to do, so I, I'm confident it's going to be even better than what it is today.
I agree with you. I think it's gonna be a lot better.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
I'd like to address the railroad issue. Oh, Ron Gettinger, 994 South Gaberry Street. Anyway, I want to address the train issue. Over the years, the train is getting louder and louder. They blow the horn starting one end of the county and, or city, and stopping at the other end of the city. I've talked to John about this. He's discussed it with some people out at Mississippi Lime Company. They sort of control it a little bit, but other times, it depends. I assume it's when there's certain drivers operating the train. I sort of think it's retaliation, I think it's vengeance, you know? I'm not the only one who hears it. My daughter lives next to me, it's a problem for her. I talked to Frank Wilson and his wife. They, they agree with me on this issue. My neighbor Marilyn, Marilyn Sumner. I don't know what John thinks, but people on Rosier Edition, they can hear it at night, it wakes them up, too. They've basically stolen our rights to our property and the rights to enjoy our property. My grandkids come to the house for, they wake up when it comes by. One of them wakes up, I have to go into the room to calm her down because it's so loud. Our bedrooms are on the second floor of our house, we're right in the level of the horn. I really don't, I don't know what the solution is. Gate may be the issue, may be the answer. But if we put all our eggs in one basket, and that gate basket gets broken, which it probably will, we're gonna end up with the same situation we have now, where they're gonna just continue to destroy our lives and take our property, our peace and quiet from us, with no retaliation. If I drove down the streets at night, blowing my horn, which would not be as loud as this train horn, I would be arrested for disturbing of the peace. Yet this train can come by our house and blow it for any length of time at any volume that they want, and there's nothing can be, nothing has been done about it. I'm not saying there's nothing can be done. I think this needs to be pressed. I think we need to see what can be done about it, and if an ordinance needs to be passed, if they need to slow down so they can't, don't have to blow it, they should do that because they have all night, anyway. So.
We can certainly look into, more into the regulations of.
And I'll engage Mississippi Lime in assisting us in this process because they're the customer.
Yeah.
And I think their word with Union Pacific probably carries more weight. We meet once a quarter with the Citizens Advisory Panel, and this topic will be on the agenda.
Okay.
Do the trains have a speed limit? We have speed limits for cars. Does, do the trains have a speed limit?
We don't get to determine.
Yeah, but do they?
For the trains, yeah. I'm sure they do, based on track inspection criteria, gauge, and a whole list of things the National Road Transportation Authority regulates. I mean, we don't get to tell them when the bulbs are horn.
No, I'm not saying.
Well, this is also, I don't, I think it's private more than it is public. The tracks in front of our house. I don't even know if Mississippi Lime maintains them or what.
No, they're maintained by the railroad.
They are maintained.
Or not maintained by the railroad.
Does the railroad own them, too, then?
Yes.
They do? But I did check slightly online a little bit, and I don't think they're allowed to do whatever they want when it comes to the noise that comes out of their whistles, so.
Okay.
You know, and if that can be addressed, it needs to be. Okay, thanks.
But the concern was addressed with me early on, and I contacted Mississippi Lime, and they sent me the forward that they sent to the railroad, you know, asking that they be more considerate. And that night and the night after that was probably the worst it's ever been. I mean, just a very ridiculous effort to put these people out. So the step has been made, the initial step has been made to contact Mississippi Lime based on that thought process. So we're certainly researching to see what we can do on our end as well.
So you're saying it obviously got worse as?
After the complaint was made to Mississippi Lime, and they forwarded it to, to the railroad, it was worse that night, and I believe the night after that. So much so, it woke my wife up, and she said, "What is that?" I said, "That's a train operator being not nice."
Eric attends those meetings as well, I'm sure he'll be vocal.
Yes. When is the next one, Mark? It's coming up, I'm not, I'm not sure. March, I think. I believe it's in March. So, thank you.
Oh, I just want to mention the lady here in the front seat. I forgot her name already.
Adrian.
Okay. She mentioned that the city of Webster Groves did something to stop the trains from doing the same thing in Webster Grove, so maybe that could be checked on. And obviously, there must be ordinances can be passed to prevent them from taking over our property, which is what they've done. They only own a small piece, there's no reason they don't own what we live in, so. Okay, thanks.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, under other business, we have the approval of our liquor license request from El San Felipe Mexican Grill, 634 St. Genevieve Drive, for the sale of all intoxicating liquor, including Sunday sales.
There was some missing information under Part C. Is Ms. Alvarez here?
No.
You know, I'd just like to have those questions answered before we approve it.
Submit it.
Okay, what was, what?
Uh, Part C, numbers one and two. I mean, she answered three through six, so I'm not sure the worst of me wants to believe that, is there something that she's trying to hide because she just didn't answer them? Or maybe she just skipped them, or I don't know.
Well, if you read number one, it said, "Do you have an interest in any liquor license which is now in force?"
And that's a yes or no question.
If so, give details.
But then she should answer yes or no.
Okay.
I'm not trying to be petty, I'm just saying that I think every line should be filled out.
Yeah, I agree. I think that it should be completely filled out, and that just keeps everything clean and.
But we can do that, can we do that by telephone call to her?
On the other hand, I don't want to prevent this from.
We can get the answers to the questions now. Presumably, if the answers are no, then there's no problem.
Right.
Okay. I don't want to prevent this process from moving forward and her from opening, and, you know, I don't want to do that.
Can we make a motion contingent on the answers being no? I'd like to make a motion to approve contingent on the answers to Section C, number one and two, being no.
Well, number two, though, if she had a liquor license before, I mean, it's okay if she did, she hasn't had it suspended or revoked or violation.
Answered, answered, well, wait a minute.
So I don't know what we can say. Like I said, I don't want to hold up the process because I want them to open, because I want to eat there.
The answer to number one being no, and the answer number two doesn't matter.
Yeah, it really doesn't. Number two makes no difference, because she's answered three and four by saying no.
You get all that, panel, all that, I don't know how you're gonna write that down.
I think the contingency is that the answer to number C1 is no.
Is no.
You're about okay with that?
Yeah, wait a minute, if it is yes.
But what if it's yes? I mean, what if she owns another restaurant somewhere and now has a license?
A phone call to jurisdiction and see if there's any issues.
No, just, yeah, do that.
Yeah.
Just simple phone call, take care of the whole thing.
For goodness sakes, spend an hour.
Behave over there.
How about leaving it up to the city staff to determine if they think there's an issue to get back to the board?
Cool.
That's a great motion.
All right.
Right there.
Thank you.
I will make that motion.
My second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We need to.
You make a motion to go into closed session.
To discuss real estate and litigation.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
Roll call, please.
Alderwoman Codwell.
Yes.
Alderman Couch.
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi.
Yeah.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi.